Secretary. Our recording secretary Vito Labella, could you please take roll call? Vito, can you take attendance? Natalia, do you mind taking attendance?
Hold on, let me just get some stuff out of the way.
No problem.
Okay, Steve Stowe.
Here.
Jennifer who?
Here.
Elizabeth Chan. Elizabeth? Might have to come back.
I do have it now if you want me to do it, but I'm fine with having her do it.
All right, I'll finish it then.
Thank you.
Okay, Vito Labella.
Present.
Hey, Marie Bruggeras.
Present.
Gara Amin. Li Ping Zhang.
Yeah.
Maya Rosenblatt. Kevin Zhao. And I believe Kevin was excused because he said he couldn't make it.
Yeah.
Elizabeth, are you there?
Here, yes.
Okay, they can hear you now.
Thanks, and welcome, everyone, welcome candidates. We're really glad you're here. Thank you for your interest. Let's get straight to it. The format for tonight, as I outlined in my email, is you'll have three minutes to make a personal statement of your choosing. Then you will be asked three questions by myself and by our two vice presidents. And then you will have two minutes for a concluding statement if you choose. It's entirely up to you. So let's go in alphabetical order here. I believe Yona, you would be first up alphabetically. Would you like to make an opening statement? Just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay, hi, everyone. My name is Yona Sophie. I am a mother of two boys, a four-year-old and a seven-year-old. I am by trade, I'm a chemist. I work in a toxicological firm. However, my background is double major in math as well. During my college days, I've been actively tutoring children to adults of a variety of ages. That's I've always had a very big interest in education. As I've included in my application, I used to be a resident advisor. I've done a lot of leadership group-related activities before I became a mom. So I felt like now it's time for me to start doing that in a different level in the community near here. One of the big reasons why I decided to apply originally was because during the pandemic, I really started to get more involved with my son's teacher and with a PTA at the school where my oldest goes to. So I really feel like I should be getting more involved. And maybe I am foreseeing even a career change later on into education or somewhat away from the business kind of work that I do now. And my background, I'm Albanian, so there is quite a big Albanian community. I would love for those announcements to have an Albanian translation. That would be very good and beneficial. I personally have taken upon myself to help people that I know during the pre-K applications, kindergarten applications. So I do actually see a need for people who have recently come to the US. And I've been here since 2007, so I finished high school and did my college career and work here in the US. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up, Daniel Lewis. The floor is yours, sir.
Hi, how are you? Thanks for the opportunity, you know, to speak with you all. Most of what, you know, I guess I would tell you, I already put in the application, but just by way of kind of summing up, I'm currently an attorney for the Tax Department. I investigate all of the criminal tax fraud that occurs in Manhattan, Brooklyn, and Staten Island. Before that, I was an assistant district attorney in Richmond County, so Staten Island, where I prosecuted primarily white-collar crimes, tax crimes within. But before I did that, it was, you know, really kind of the full complement of all criminal prosecution out there. What's not on the application that I submitted to you all, maybe what you don't know, is that I was one of the original crop of New York City Teaching Fellows in 2004. I think the program was first enacted in 2003, but I joined in '04. I was a math teacher. I taught at Long Island City High School. I taught at Truman High School. I taught at Springfield Gardens High School. So I am well familiar with the sort of challenges that teachers face, that students face, that administration faces. And I guess another couple of things. I'm a longstanding Bay Ridge resident. You know, I've lived in here for, you know, probably almost 20 years. I have two kids that are both in public school. One's in 3K, the other is in kindergarten. And my wife and my intention is that they'll continue in public school for the duration of their education. And I think that really speaks to, I guess, the third thing that I'd want you all to know, which is that my wife and I both are products of the public school systems. And we both went on to attend, you know, Ivy League undergraduate schools. And, you know, my wife went to Columbia for a master's program. I, you know, went to Brooklyn Law School here. So I'm a big believer in maintaining the standards of public education. And that's kind of a, you know, a torch that I would like to see, you know, safeguarded and carried on into the future. And that really kind of prompts my desire to participate, you know, in these sorts of councils, which I think are very important to that end. So with that, I thank you for the opportunity, and it's nice to meet you all.
Sure, thank you, Daniel. Myra Kazmi. Would you like to make an opening statement?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Myra Kazmi. I'm a mother of three kids. And I did masters in chemistry from the back home Pakistan. And now I changed my degrees here in, my degrees are like, it's now qualified for the bachelor's in sciences here. And I always very passionate about education field. I was a teacher in the back home. I have a school in the back home. But when I came here, I never see any opportunity to, you know, go into that system. So when I see this post, I believe that I can do some work in this, like in this field. So that's why I applied for this and nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe our fourth candidate emailed late today and said that she is not able to attend, and I do not see her here. So we have three candidates interviewing tonight. Okay, I will lead off with the first question. And I will ask each of you in turn the following question, and you'll have, I think, I think two minutes to answer will be the time limit, but I don't think that's sort of a hard and fast rule. First question, besides overcrowding, what do you think is the most important education issue in District 20? And we'll start with you, Yona, on that one.
Okay, I would like to answer based on the very recent experience of post-COVID. One of my children is in a special classroom, so he receives speech therapy. And one of the struggles that I think was like the biggest struggle for me is him receiving adequate services throughout the pandemic. And recently, I received a paper saying that basically all children can have extra help. And I realized that due to the lack of the teachers' availability, or, you know, the number of teachers available to teach, he is being, he cannot get to the full amount of the services that he's entitled to. So teachers are trying to help in ELA and math, but they're trying to do it by taking him out of gym, out of arts, out of science class. And another experience that I had was also with the after-school programs and the summer programs. I think that it is very important for children to have the extra time when exposure. And unfortunately, this has not been available. I enrolled my son in the public summer program, and I was very disappointed because there was no training, basically, to geared towards children who might not be as fast as some others. So a very basic example, just to wrap it up, the iPads that are provided by the school, they do have an option for the math problems to be read out loud. And it took a week of frustration for me to realize that there was such option, and nobody took the time to go through like the basic description of that particular program, which was not the same as it is used in the school. And so I'm a big advocate that you can teach math in 100 million ways. I've done it. And I'm a strong believer in that. I do work with my son at home, but as working mothers, it is a challenge, and we're limited in time. So I'd love for the education system to work a little harder on coordinating extra time. So everybody can get access to other services. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Daniel, other than overcrowding, what do you think is the most important education issue in District 20?
Right, so there's a lot there. I mean, I don't want to, obviously, I don't want to talk to overcrowding, but I do think it's important to distinguish, you know, without unpacking it right here. There's overcrowding, you know, as a school, and then there's overcrowding within classrooms themselves. And like I said, this isn't the pro, I know this isn't the proper form to unpack that, but, you know, I just wanted to separate that, you know, that out. Because at least in my mind, there's two kind of components to that. So, but that aside, I guess the most obvious answer is COVID, right? I mean, you know, keeping, making sure that our kids are healthy, our kids are safe, you know. But assuming that that is, you know, that that's something that is going to abate, you know, at the, you know, in the near future, and that what we're really talking about are kind of institutional concerns. I really think that for me, this breaks down, or this depends on what level of school you're talking about. I think in a, in a PS setting, like, you know, among the primary schools, and I, this might be an unpopular, or I may be swimming upstream, you know, with this. But to me, I think that one of the biggest issues in the primary schools is actually expecting too much of our young children. You know, there seems to be this, you know, tendency to push all of this kind of higher-order content down further and further, and demanding more and more of younger and younger kids without allowing them the requisite time, you know, to play, to explore, you know, to be kids. And I think that that's a very important part of, you know, just like of a child's young experience. As we go on to like, you know, an IS, you know, like an immediate school level, I think that the most important prob, or the most important problem is teaching those children problem-solving skills. I think, I think we do a very good job of teaching content, you know, substantive knowledge. But I have yet to see any instruction in how to problem solve. And I think that that's a very important part of life, you know, going forward. I think that's a very important part of being successful on standardized tests. And so that, you know, so I think that that is the most critical gap, you know, there at the highest level. And then finally, at the high school level, I think it's really restoring the value of a high school diploma. You know, ensuring that, you know, that that piece of paper actually means something, you know, to prospective employers, and that we're not just populating, you know, the halls of quote-unquote higher education, you know, with people who are doing the sort of math, or, you know, learning the sort of, you know, material that they ought to have show mastery of in 10th to 11th grade. So that's, that's how I would break that down. I know that's probably maybe more comprehensive than what your question was, but that's how I would answer it.
No problem at all. Question, other than overcrowding, so next up is Myra. Myra, other than overcrowding, what do you think is the most important education issue in District 20?
In District 20, as I guess, is I teach a lot of kids in my community. And I see that the main issue with the fifth to eighth grade students are the practical work. Like they are readings from the book, like their practical issues are a lot. Like if we tackle that issues, like we work with the, as they launch the STEAM program and the other programs, but they are not working so good on that. I just focus on that issue and also the writing issue. I see that the kids' base is not good about writing, that how to write, that two issues I generally see in the kids. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Myra. Okay. Jen, I just texted you the second question. Can you ask the candidates?
Yeah, no problem. So the second question is, please describe a time where you had to work with a team of people to set a goal and accomplish it.
Jen, is there any, are you away, are you?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, much better.
All right, sorry, I must have been muted. All right, so please describe a time where you had to work with a team of people to set a goal and accomplish it. I guess we will start with Yona.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, I would just go ahead and describe a little bit of what I do. As a chemist in a toxicological firm, I am essentially working in a group. So all of our work is group-based. And the recent event post-COVID, one of our coworkers retired and moved to North Carolina. So out of a team of three, now we're a team of two, that we had to also take on her responsibilities, which are very far out of my own field, like marketing, customer communication, trying to sell our final documents, an area very far from my scientific day-to-day basis. So being able to say that in three months' time, we have not only done a part of her work, but also succeeded and exceeded our expectations, that's something that I'm very proud of post-COVID. Also, we, I am undertaking like a website rewrite with my team and my CFO. I do also do writing on the side, so very different bits and pieces of collaborative work like that. For the school, we were just doing the pumpkin patch activities. I was involved with the picture-taking. So for all of the schools, the public school where my son goes to, so it would be K through five. So I was working closely with a parent coordinator, with the other members of the PTA. Those are my most recent group works. I hope it's sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Daniel is next.
All right, yes, thank you. So when I got this question and I read it, I almost kind of, similar to Yona, I almost felt like I was spoiled for choice here. Because really, working as a team is, you know, kind of part and parcel of what I do, whether at the Tax Department or with my, you know, US Army Reserves Unit, where I'm a major, I'm a defense attorney in that capacity. But, I mean, I'll just go with the tax example. I mean, the assignment is, you know, is typically, or the overall assignment is typically the same. It's to determine whether, you know, any particular case ought to be referred for a criminal tax fraud prosecution. And there's, you know, I won't bore you with the details of it, but there's, you know, certain avenues, there's certain lines of effort. You know, auditors are, you know, are assigned to do one thing, investigators are assigned to do other things, attorneys are assigned to do their own, you know, projects, but the attorneys oversee the entire project. So, you know, the auditor and the investigator will, you know, I mean, well, the first thing we'll do is lay out an investigative plan, you know, kind of defining what those lines of effort are and what the different parts are going to look at and examine. They'll present, they'll go and gather their information, they'll present their initial findings with, you know, to me. And will, you know, I, even though I'm the lead for any of these investigations, I absolutely eschew, you know, the tendency to take any sort of like dictatorial approach. I really think that the best result comes from a collaborative effort, you know. And so I want to hear the input from both disciplines, and from that, we'll refine, you know, we'll just go through a process of distilling and refining, you know, the data that we're looking at, you know, until we get to a point where we're ready to make a final, you know, a final determination. I know that's painting with a, you know, a broad brush. Obviously, I can't get into specifics of anything. But that is in general the framework, you know, that we, you know, that I work with. And it's, you know, and it is just an inherently team-oriented, you know, approach, and one that I think would, you know, one that I find does well, almost no matter where you are. So, yeah, that's how I would answer that.
Thank you. So the last candidate that we have here is Myra.
Yeah.
Hi, you're up.
Yeah, I'm very new to this system. Like, I spent here three and a half years. So the other two candidates are most probably like most experienced from me. But the thing is, I like to work, I like to work in a group, and I know I have ability to do work in a, sorry, my kid.
No problem, we're all parents here, right? Oh, I think we, we have to go back to her at this point, or we can wait. Steve, what do you think?
Let's wait. Let's see, she's, oh, and she's now off. Yeah, so let's continue. Now she's not even on the call anymore, I see. So let's continue.
Well, if she comes back on, then we can circle back to her.
I'll keep an eye out for her.
Yeah, thank you. And Elizabeth, I think you have the third question.
Hi, yes, okay, so the third question is, "Parents are often ignored by the Department of Education on important issues. What should the CEC do in response?" And the first candidate is Yuna.
Hi, thank you. Okay, so I recently became involved with a PTA. So this was my, this is my first year, and I am the recording secretary. And in the absence of the president, I also do the meetings. One of the things that I did not realize is how welcoming the actual schools are for parent involvement. Where I come from and in my background, it's really intimidating to get involved with the policy and to get involved, like with the Ministry of Education. So I was astonished at how easy it is to give a helping hand if needed. However, what I think is really lacking is how does PTA communicate, let's say, with CEC? I have been part of some CEC meetings, especially during the pandemic. And I did not real, I do not know still what the streamline of information is. I would love it if parents would be made available to how information can be transferred better. Because I see from the monthly PTA executive board meetings and general meetings, that a lot of good questions come out of there. And of course, the pandemic has shadowed most of the questions. But those are questions that are not limited just to the school where my son is attending. Those are questions that are universal. So I think that we should work more with the PTAs of the school and try to find a better bridge or a better network. And maybe you, maybe you might know that there is one, but it's not obvious enough to parents out there. So I think this would be the first step of the communication. Because I think that it's not that parents are not being heard, but sometimes we don't speak to the right ear. And we do not talk to the right people. Our school president, for example, was very approachable, but you know of their situation room. So I personally had an issue with how the announcement were being made if a classroom had to have a closure due to COVID. So I was one of those parents that I just called up the president's office and spoke with him. But I did it out of my own need or out of my own initiative, but that was not something that other parents knew, that they could just do that. So I think it could be more transparent in how you can communicate. And people that are not, and I'm not part of the recent, and I have not been recently involved with education. So I think the general community of parents, they are not aware of the things that they can be involved with. And sometimes I even heard from people that, oh, I'm just applying because it looks good on my resume. Or I'm just applying because this is something that, you know, I can present to somebody else. But I think the true reason is that to actually speak for our children, because they don't, especially when they're young, they don't really have a voice. So I think to fine-tune that communication will be the first step. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, Daniel Lewis, the second, third question again to you. "Parents are often ignored by the Department of Education on important issues. What should the CEC do in response?"
All right, thanks. So when I, when I read that question in the email, I have to say I was struck by how provocative the stimulus of the question is. You know, it kind of, the assumption embedded in there is the, you know, is the claim that parents are often ignored by, you know, by the Department of Education. I, I, I'm hesitant to take that at its face value. And the reason I say that is because I think it's important to distinguish between, you know, parents that are actually ignored by, you know, by the system, by the process, and, and parents who feel that they're ignored because that what their request was or what their demand was, wasn't acceded to, you know, or wasn't met by, you know, by the Board of Ed. And because they didn't get any, you know, a particular resolution or satisfaction, then, then they concluded that they were being ignored. And that's not really the case. So I guess I would just say from the outset, you know, when a parent is truly ignored by the system, that's not good, right? I mean, I think we can all agree with that. And I think that everyone, you know, is on board with the same message that, that parents, you know, should be, should be heard. But I, but I also think, though, that the system that is in place, you know, the one that the education law dictates, you know, that has monthly meetings with the, you know, the superintendent calls, you know, these other various fora that parents have, whether it's through the Parent Teacher Association or what have you, you know, do allow ample opportunity for parents to voice their, you know, voice their concerns. So really, I think what we're, what we're talking about, instead of parents being actually ignored, is the perception by the parent that they're being ignored because they're, because they're, because the system hasn't, you know, acceded to its, you know, to their request or demand. And, and I, you know, just, again, as a, as a general proposition, there's nothing necessarily wrong with that. The system, you know, ought not to give in to every single, you know, request or demand that every single parent makes. And that part of, you know, the administration's responsibility and part of the CEC's responsibility, you know, is to, you know, is to take those concerns that are, you know, valid, legitimate, and reasonable concerns, and to make sure that they are, you know, and to make sure that they are addressed appropriately. But that is not to say that every single issue raised meets that, meets that benchmark, you know. And at some point, someone has to make that call. So I guess just in some, you know, actually ignoring, not good. But, but just simply because every single, you know, demand wasn't, you know, satisfied to every last, to every last person, that is not, that is not indicative of a system that is insensitive to, you know, to a parent's request.
Okay, thank you. So is Myra back? Steve, is Myra back?
I have not seen her. She did not pop back in.
We can, we can proceed with closing. We can, we can proceed with closing statements from Yona and Daniel. And and then if Myra comes back, she comes back. And if not, we can, we'll we'll think about next steps at that point. So Yona, would you like to make a closing statement? Anything else you'd like us to know?
Okay, okay. So I guess in summation, I would like to thank you for the opportunity. Even if I am not elected, I will continue to be an active part and try to get more involved. I really am very passionate about education and even though I am a regulatory chemist, I am a teacher at heart and I never lose the opportunity to not just educate and guide my son through what love of schooling is, because that's what brought me to where I am now. But also, I would like all the other parents to see that America does have a lot of opportunities that other countries do not have. And just as part of the background, when I came here, I came on a student visa and I was, I went through the culture shock of high school. I did not realize that there was such a thing as the cheerleader group and the nerd group, and that's where I totally fit in. I was not a talker years ago. And the only reason that I became as active as I did was because I felt the need, that people need to know that there are actual students out there who love to know more about math, who find chemistry fascinating, that people tutor other people, not to just do their homework, but to actually teach them the essence of, you know, the information. And one of the most striking experiences I've had was during my community college in New Jersey, where I tutored a war veteran who came back. And I was probably like 21 and he was like 30 years older than me. And he had tried to take algebra three times, unfortunately not passing. I was, I happen to be the math walking, and I'm not saying that I have like a magic wand or anything, but the fact that he was able to grasp the notion and he was able to pass that class and meet me randomly years after and thank me for that, that actually is something that I'm very proud of. And when I started my job, I lived closer to a Huntington Center and it's true, it's I I I had come from the tutoring experience of people who really starved for education, like people who were so old and they really wanted to have a diploma in their hands, to young kids, like a 10-year-old who would care less for his grade or less for the math. And when I met his mom, I was, I actually, I told her, like, how come you're not involved? And she said, well, I don't care, you know, it's not private school, like he'll pass the class. So that's the mentality that I would like to change. And if this is a way to help parents out there and, you know, future generations, then I would love the opportunity to do that. So thank you.
Thank you, Yona. Daniel, would you like to make a closing statement?
Sure. I I I guess I I think that Yona and I probably, in in many words, I think she said what I'm gonna just sum up. I think we'll probably agree that that the the public education system really is like a, it's a pillar of American society. And in, you know, in in New York, in New York City, I I think that we have a public education system that really is the envy of, you know, of a lot of the rest of the country. And it's a well-deserved, you know, reputation. And I, one of the reasons for that, I think, is because it's a, it's a constantly evolving, you know, system. I I saw it, you know, myself, just in in my son, when he started out in, you know, in pre-K and went to kindergarten. I I I remember him doing this, the social emotional, you know, curriculum. And I, both my wife and I, that wasn't around, but, you know, my wife and I were going through primary school. Both of us thought like, what is this? They're talking about like, you know, sharing and caring and feelings and, you know, and, you know, where, where's the, you know, where's the math, where's the, you know? But that that was, that is an antiquated, you know, way of thinking. And I I see how much better adjusted he is, you know, at five years old as a person, as interacting with his, you know, peers, with his teachers, with adults. And, you know, both my wife and I, you know, stepped back afterwards and were like, you know what? Like this is an example of like the system, you know, evolving and getting better than what, you know, than what we experienced. And I think that's exciting and that's, you know, the the continued evolution of this is something that, you know, that really prompts me to want to be a part of it. I think that there's just a really unique opportunity to be, you know, a a part of that process as it's evolving. And and I think that I can bring the, you know, kind of, you know, unique experiences that I know that I have, whether it's, you know, as an attorney, whether it's, you know, as a soldier, you know, whether it's an ability to, you know, interpret the education law and make sure that, you know, it's being applied correctly, you know, as it's as it's written. That these are, that these are skills that I think that I can bring to bear to help, you know, our district, you know, and the CEC. So I hope you feel the same way. And if you do, then I look very, I look very much look forward to serving with you.
Thank you so much, Daniel. I think with that, we will conclude the meeting. Next steps are, we have our monthly meeting next Wednesday. The the council will vote at that meeting, seven o'clock. On the two open seats, there are also, just so Yona and Daniel, you both know, there are also four other candidates. The position one seat has been open for several months now. And so there are now a total of, there are a total of eight applications in. In in two here tonight, one was not able to make it. But so there'll be at least eight individuals will be voting from next Wednesday. So please tune in. The link will be available on the website, same format as we used tonight. And I think with that, unless there's any other business, Natalia, there's nothing else we have to do now, right?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, I will make a motion to conclude the meeting. Is second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Anya Park? Okay, thanks, everyone. Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Yona. And I will talk to all of you later this week and next week. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Thank you.